Pat's on Zoom, Donna is here, which we bless all the time. Thank God. Robin is on Zoom, John Cusco is on Zoom, and Ellen is here. Dave is here, Mike Zerio is here. And that's it?
Yes.
Yes.
How about Toder?
Don't... She's still in Maine? She's in Maine, yes.
She is?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Carry on. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Ellen, and Casey. Casey and Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Okay. Next, the minutes. Ellen is approving.
Second, the minutes.
Second, Mario. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Okay. Over participation? Nope. Okay, Mike Z, second time.
Second time.
You're, uh...
Mikey, could I stop you one second?
Yeah.
Going back to the minutes.
Sorry, okay.
Did we... Donna, is this accurate, number 12? I thought we mentioned the Friday after Thanksgiving for an open house. But I could be wrong.
I don't think so.
Was it Saturday?
I think, I think that's what, that's what I recall, but I don't have a...
Yeah, because I thought people thought it might conflict with the night light up main or, uh, alumni or...
The downtown Torrington thing?
Yeah.
Oh, lighting, light, you light up, yeah, yeah.
But it, it, uh, that was my recollection.
Okay.
Okay. No problem. Watch the, watch the court over there.
Yeah.
Amen's here.
Okay.
We have time to...
Okay, Mikey.
Okay, Mike.
Right in the past, okay. Uh, hi, everyone, again, um, getting into it, um, with respect to the occupied portion in the construction tech lab down in the high school lower level. The dust collection system startup is scheduled for later this month, um, for full operation. Now that the school has been out for the summer, we have been, returned the middle school cafeteria that we were temporarily, being used as a weight room during the January occupancy for the high school students. We had turned that into now a permanent cafeteria space for the middle school students. Additionally, in the occupied limits of the middle school building, addition, sorry. In the occupied limits of the middle school building on the first floor, there are two STEM and Makerspace rooms where the pipe grid system wasn't complete during the January occupancy. Uh, and since school has been out, part of those ceilings have been removed, so we could facilitate the installation of the pipe grid system. And then they will eventually be reinstalled for permanent use ahead of the days to a, or to be upcoming school year occupancy. In addition, temporary walls that we had used and constructed to separate the high school occupancy from the middle school construction phase have been taken down and the permanent walls and doors are now in place. Speaking on the upcoming middle school building turnover, this space has been receiving furniture for over a month and, um, has been shaping up for its intended use for the school year. In the last few weeks, we have been compiling all the necessary documentation required to SLAM, the designers, and then the building department in preparation of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the, uh, middle school building limits. Uh, this will allow the administration and all the necessary entities to have adequate time to prepare for the upcoming school year in a new building. While that covers the building aspect for substantial completion of the middle school, the site work, the two minutes asphalt and concrete making up the permanent middle school parking lot and access to the building is in progress. Uh, we currently have an asphalt paving date of August 11th, weather pending. And we intend to go for another substantial completion request, uh, for those aspects of site work shortly thereafter. Concurrently with that, discussions and sign off from P&amp;Z will occur. On the slide, here is some progress related to the cold form metal framing and rough carpentry associated with the gymnasium vestibule. If you recall, the shell of this vestibule will eventually be constructed as a curtain wall system, with the lobby being constructed as one long storefront system filled with glass. Same area just east of that lobby, um, this is...
That's actually a snack bar.
Yes, this is, uh, the exterior side of the concession space. Um, permanently the outer shell, uh, this jargon in the building is going to be constructed with fiber cement panels, which is the same material used at the surround of the middle school entrance. This right here is the north side of the gymnasium along the, right next to Route 8. Uh, the CMU veneer has been completed, it's been washed, and as you can see...
It's really nice, it's the same as the, the side of the...
The auditorium.
Yeah, the auditorium, you know, constructed out of the same veneer.
And the windows, there's only one window missing, it's really nice.
Um, as you can tell from the picture, we got two workers from Cherry Hill up on that boom lift and they're installing the curtain wall system framing, uh, making up the clear story windows in the high school gymnasium. As of today, all that glass has been installed. Um, staying within the limits of the gymnasium, overhead mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection systems are in progress. Uh, the current condition of, of this space as of today, uh, is the overhead work required, um, was completed and then the ceiling has been painted. Uh, gymnasium equipment, the divider curtains, basketball hoops, et cetera, are also nearing completion.
Can you...
Yeah. In the distance, you can see the plywood sheathing is in progress on the east wall, which eventually gets drywalled, fastened over it, uh, making up the furred and shed roof walls, uh, similar to the existing conditions that we had in the original gymnasium. These walls are actually, um, almost complete with drywall and, uh, we're actually on our second coat of taping on both of the walls, so we're making pretty good progress. Moving upstairs to the second floor of the renovation, this was above your existing locker room area, or was also a locker room area at the time. Um, this is where we got the two health classrooms, you have a weight room and some storage spaces. Uh, material metal framing is complete and our in-wall and overhead MEP FP activities are ongoing. Uh, last week, we received building department sign off for the in-wall inspections and we're closing walls and we're starting to tape. Staying on the second floor of the renovation, here was some progress that we had taken for some overhead domestic plumbing and hydraulic piping systems. Uh, you could see some ductwork hanging in the air in the background along with some fire protection that was running east to west of the page. So it's very active up there. Jumping back down to the first floor locker room area, you have interior masonry partitions are substantially complete. As you can see, we have hollow metal door frames that have been grounded in place and we are making up the entries of the spaces and the top of all details are in progress. We're starting to get going a little bit quicker with our overhead MEP FP. Um, so work is ongoing on first and second floor down there. Uh, moving west of Area H into Area G, which would be closer to the occupied school. Uh, this is where your middle school locker rooms are. Um, here's a picture of the wet wall construction between the community restrooms. Um, as of, in the last couple of days, all of our masonry partitions in there are being constructed in our near completion. Again, more mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection, some progress overhead. Jumping outside in the middle school parking lot, uh, for perspective, here's a shot of the auto shop building shell. As you can tell, the CMU backup walls have been completed and the openings are created for future curtain wall and window storefront systems. CMU veneer ties are in place and the air vapor barrier installations at the time of this picture were ongoing. Fast forward to recent times, the veneer block, just like the north elevation, has been completed and the masonry contractor is working on the large east elevation of the building, um, which actually faces the athletic field. It's the last big elevation that they have working on, it's actually to the right of the page there. Back to the middle school parking lot, we got concrete curving, uh, making up the perimeter of the bus loop and then the rain gardens and sidewalks are all in progress ahead of the August 11th paving date that I had mentioned and we're, we're tracking well for that. As I just mentioned before, these are some newly placed concrete sidewalks along the east side of the middle school building. Uh, we're making our way up north of the picture and around Area H, uh, the existing building and the new renovation area. And moving into the athletic fields, you are looking at the north multipurpose field, um, fence post installation progress ahead of the anchor curving. Earlier this week, more form work and concrete placements for the anchor curb have proceeded on this field. On the south side, and we're going to move along the west curb line, um, that is shared against the tennis courts. Um, jumping up north to the JV baseball field, um, there was a filler day for the paver who had began some asphalt sidewalks along the perimeter of the field. More recently, we had the fencing contractor Eagle Fence and Guard Rial, um, who's been installing all the fencing and safety netting associated with the athletic fields and throughout the, uh, complex, has begun to core holes on top of the anchor curb uh, for installation of the four foot high fence in this field. Fast forward today, we are getting a lot of stone delivered, loads and loads of stone. Um, all the filter fabric has been rolled out on the JV baseball field. Um, we're getting stone, getting black drains ready, um, so things are, things are definitely happening.
Is that the varsity of JV?
Uh, yeah, that's the JV...
Close to the apartments.
Close to the apartments, yep.
JV and multipurpose.
JV baseball, okay. Some drone shots on a cloudy day. Very nice. Um, just to talk a little bit about costing taxes in the period. Uh, we had received a cost proposal from the structural steel contractor, who most recently completed the middle school science room pipe grid along with the two pipe grid systems that we had mentioned before, the middle school STEM and Makerspace rooms. In previous cost reports, we've been carrying a $7,000 cost as an estimate only for the engineering. Um, the entire cost now that is being carried assumes the engineering, material and installation of the pipe grid systems in the three spaces that I had mentioned before, um, just shy of $30,000. Originally, the scope of work was assigned to OWI at the time of bid, which was our general trades contractor. Um, however, it was agreed with them during the high school installation, um, that the system needed to be engineered. Um, the delegated design, engineering and professional liability coverage was not signed at the time of bid and we couldn't, could not be provided by the general trades contractor, OWI. They had already provided the material and they installed the structural portion of the high school classroom, which has been in use since January. Um, and it was agreed that they would upgrade the high school science classroom installation so they could match the design criteria now provided by Berlin Steel. And that they would provide the middle school materials at no cost. Um, so the middle school installation scope of work was reassigned to Berlin Steel to ensure that the professional liability covers, the delegated design, um, was provided on the design. Berlin Steel cost is being negotiated for submission as an owner contingency cost change. In terms of schedule, uh, for the final building phase of the project, Area H, work is proceeding.
What are you thinking about in terms of what the scope of, what the change run might be?
Cost wise? Like 30,000, or just shy of it. Still negotiating, but a little, little shy of 30,000. Back to Area H, uh, work is proceeding every day and we have a lot of man hours being exhausted during the week and weekends to put in as much work in place as possible. Earlier this week, we engaged the trades in a scheduling toll planning session so we could refine activities and durations and task handoffs for efficiency. Um, we're constantly thinking about working on Sundays, who, you know, who could benefit from it? You know, we're working Saturdays, six days a week, seven in some cases. Um, you know, we're just keeping our foot on the gas, so. That's all the good, bad, fun news I can really provide for you today, um, but happy to answer any questions for you guys to be having.
Mikey, um, the elevator in H?
Yep.
What's the status there?
Um, so I am, got a list, a punch list, um, from them a couple of weeks ago, tracking to finishing that punch list by this Saturday. Biggest hurdle of that was the electrical and the requirements that they need in order to, for installation, so they're coming back out on Monday, elevator installer, to confirm that the punch list has been all resolved and then hopefully get them lined up to start, uh, installing the last elevator of our building.
That other elevator stuffed at the board of ed was uncomfortable, does that, that's all done?
Uh, yep, so we met a couple of Fridays ago with, uh, SLAM and, um...
Kone.
Yep, Kone, the school, um, just talked about what was possible. Um, there was a PR that was issued a couple of months ago that now needs to be revised based on our discussion on that Friday and that way we can use that as a scope of work to, to get to the elevator.
Did we get it done when you're installing the other one, or is that a whole different group of guys?
If we can time it out pretty perfectly, yeah, it could definitely be a possibility, I just need the, I need the design, so. That's just something we gotta work out with.
Who's holding up there?
We just gotta work with SLAM to, to get it out, so. When Kim gets back, we gotta make sure that he's on...
Yeah, I don't know if we could wait for Kim.
What, what are you targeting, the elevator install?
For the elevator four in Area H?
Yeah.
Uh, within the next couple of weeks. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tight, but I mean, it's just a matter of getting...
We just want to make sure it's working because we've got things going in there.
Right for Area H.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the timing with the program change and stuff.
Sorry, I have a question, I don't understand what's going on with, uh, elevator two, uh, administration.
Well, the, to the board of ed, you correct me if I'm wrong. The board, the board of ed was concerned because, uh, the way the elevator was programmed, a person could conceivably take it up to the board of ed when that wasn't the intent of the design.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
Right now, you have, you have two entrances to your elevator, one, which is, per, one half of the usage was for the board of ed and the other half was for school usage. If you come in from the vestibule side, the idea that they want is to not have to use any card reader to just hit the button and all you're able to do is go up to the fourth floor, which is just the board of ed limits. Conversely, if you have a card access and the idea was to put a card reader inside the elevator, that way, you know, if you have a card access, it means you've been authorized to be in that building, you can go to any floor in the building. Um, so it's just a matter of refining that programming, adding a card reader in the vestibule and then also the entrances that are surrounding the elevator, making sure that they're a little bit more secure, that way people who shouldn't be there, don't get in.
And that was the original plan.
Yeah, right.
Part of it's like, like staff behavior too, right, there's things that, like, they have to do, like, see the person to and from the elevator.
Right, running it up there.
Yeah.
There's the human effectiveness, getting somebody to, if you have business that, you know, having somebody there to shepherd you along, so that's, that's the other half of it too, but adding cameras, adding more programming, security, that's all part of the conversation we're meeting on Friday, so.
Are you gonna go through the values on the, of the PCOS or no?
Uh, yeah, once we go through that section, I'll, I'll go through them, yeah.
Yeah, done.
With the, on that last area with the athletic fields, what did it mean that it had to be engineered?
For the athletic fields?
Yeah, you said it was gonna cost in the range of 7,000, but then it had to be engineered, so now it's just...
Yeah, so we'd, that's for the pipe grid installations for the, the middle school and also the high school. Originally, it was assigned to our general trades contractor and not...
Not the, not the field.
Yeah, it's not the field.
Right, not, not the field.
Not the field.
I just didn't know what it meant that it, that you discovered it had to be engineered.
Yeah, it was a requirement that we had reviewed with SLAM, um, it's all about liability and coverage, so.
So it's just a, it's mostly a liability. So, yeah, what happens in the project is there are, the project is mainly designed by the engineer and the architect of record, but there are some things in the process that they call delegated designs, meaning that they are not doing the work for the design. They pass that down onto the, the trade, the person doing the work.
Okay.
So those people have to do the engineering, that's the delegated design, and that's what I mean. I think it would, that's where there was a, a lapse in knowing...
Yeah.
That that was actually a delegated design requirement to begin with.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. So... The punch list items for the high school?
Yep.
Are they gonna get all completed during the summer or is there gonna be sooner?
Yeah, we made a big push this summer to, to keep reducing these items and same thing with the middle school, just trying to get as much as we can while, while kids are not in session.
Yeah, I could understand the middle school dribbling over, but I'm sure we'd like to have the high school done 100%.
Yeah. I think I have an updating the commentary about the items, but, either way, yes, to answer your question, yes.
Yeah. And... That's not the high school, right, these punch list items?
The one, yeah, I separated them from the high school and the middle school.
Oh, that's two.
Middle school's got...
So right now, there's 31 open.
In the high school?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, and it, it's probably cut in half to be honest, as...
Yeah, less than that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, next is, uh, B&amp;L, uh, John couldn't be here, so he gave me, uh, his list and I'll just read it for you. BL Field Reports, Field Report 117, tracking 21 items. 11 items are related to the high school and also tracked on the punch list. Five items are related to the site work. Three items are related to the middle school and will be tracked on the punch list. Two items are forward looking for the work that is in progress. Special inspections, reinforcing inspection at site sidewalks and site, uh, foundations, no deficiencies noted. Reinforcing inspection at slab on deck in Building H, no deficiencies noted. Intermessant paint and cement, it's fireproofing in Building Part H, no deficiencies. Tri-State Material Lab reports, no outstanding material test issues. IES, that's the third commissioning, no new reports since the last meeting. Startup testing, water chlorination plumbing, middle school, final readings passed. Water chloration HVAC hydronic, middle school, final readings passed. NFPA 13 fire sprinkler system, middle school, no issues to report. NFPA 72 fire alarm test, no schools, no issues to report. Testing and balancing of HVAC, HVAC hydronic system balancing is ongoing at the high school. HVAC air system balancing on the, ongoing in the middle school, no balancing reports have been issued since our last meeting. Connecticut High Performance Building Report, continue to monitor store paint and cleaning supplies. Recycled content of pre-consumer building materials stands at 17%, minimum is 10%. Regionally manufactured product stands at just 42%, minimum is 10%. Construction waste management, 120 CY of waste generated in May with 65% being recycled. Minimum requirement is 50%. That's his report, and Donna has a copy of that.
One thing to touch on for John's report is one of the last pieces of documentation you're looking for for the middle school and reviewing with the building department in SLAM was the preliminary air balancing report, uh, from the middle school, which we had received yesterday, so that's... One of the last pieces of information we need for, uh, walking the line for yourself.
Yeah, right now, the, the two secretaries and the principal and assistant principal are working in the high school portion that was for the middle school. That's it was where the high school was using it, so they can be in there.
Yeah.
So it's all set up, we brought down file cabinets, they're, uh, they have their computers there, so they're working there.
The only thing on John's report that might be a big hit later, as he said five items on the site work and those things, I think that's gonna be significant.
Not that we're already, haven't thought about addressing this somewhere.
Next item, uh, you have the application for payment of $2,981,783.75. Have a motion to approve?
Ellen?
So Donna, second?
Second.
Second, Casey? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Next, John, uh, the John. Mike, sorry.
PCOS?
Yeah.
Starting off with 591R1 is a CM contingency cost of 1,600 bucks. We talked about elevator four, which is the last elevator, uh, that lives in Area H. And it was actually assessed with some tariffs while I was reaching the United States port. Uh, our current trade contract for this project does not outline the procedures, um, for handling tariffs of these types. In the recent version of this PCO, um, you know, it contains specific customs border patrol forms that substantiate these tariffs. Um, so between ONG and SLAM, you know, we have decided to draw this type of cost from our contingency. And to be clear, this is the only tariff cost that we have been hit with to date and that we've expected, so. 592R1 is an owner contingency cost of $16,863. Uh, if you recall, a few months ago, we had approved a cost in the amount of $46,000 for the electrical and signage costs for three site signs around the complex. First sign being an aluminum panel that says Torrington High School and Middle Schools, uh, that's actually mounted to the chain link fence at the daily drive entrance. Uh, the second sign being the refurbishment of the existing electronic display, uh, where it's at the grass island where the old ONG trailer, uh, used to be. And then number three is the, another aluminum tub, tubed frame sign, uh, that's internally illuminated, um, lettering at the winter parking lot towards the road, uh, this cost is being resented. Cost being represented in this PCO is for the sonotube concrete foundation work and then the trenching and backfilling required to support the electrical requirements for the signs two and three that I had mentioned. PCO 593 is an owner cost of $4,606. Uh, it was noticed that an interior pair of double doors entering in from the north elevation entrance of Area H was not specified to receive positive latching hardware. Uh, it was only equipped with poles that could open and close the pair of doors. Um, but based on fire codes, the idea of positive latching hardware, uh, includes a mullion, it includes an exit device or vertical surface rods, um, so the door latch sets into the strike, uh, so it remains engaged, so it doesn't prevent the door from opening because of a fire, pressure differences. Cost here credits back the material and labor for the specified poles, but the add cost to install the mullion and exit devices, um, to remain within code. Uh, PCO 598R1 is an owner contingency cost of $1,230. Uh, was noted that the, was noticed that the two ice makers called to be provided in Area H were not actually capable of making ice. The model provided in the documents was for a 500 pound storage bin that, again, wasn't capable of making ice. Um, so given the expense of an ice machine, you know, we had worked with SLAM to find one suitable ice machine, uh, that was closer to a zero dollar cost. one suitable ice machine, uh, that was closer to a zero-dollar cost, understanding that, you know, credits were coming back for specified ice bins for replacements of them, since there wasn't anything to really install. Um, you know, if you recall, we relocated the existing ice machine that they were using back in the old school, and it's actually currently operating in the E-one custodial closet, and we're gonna be able to relocate that one, um, into location number two, once the space is ready to receive it in Area H.
Excuse me?
Yep.
You forgot, PCO.
Yeah, I had it in different order.
Five ninety-seven, okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm on five ninety-seven now, and then I'll see the five ninety-nine. Um, five ninety-seven is an owner cost of one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, when SLAM's consultant, uh, came to the project to develop a punch list, uh, for the theatrical auditorium space, uh, they required that we secure the masking curtain track, uh, with an aircraft cable from downstairs to upstairs, um, on the wall to prevent swaying when the curtain, uh, was in operation. Uh, we have reviewed this in depth with SLAM, uh, and there was nothing in the documents that required this work to be performed, uh, in the base contract, so we had tracked the work on time and material, uh, in the amount of fifteen eighty-three. PCO five ninety-nine is an owner cost of two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. During the Phase Two-A move-in, it was noticed that there were no call switches for the resource room in Area B two, high school, and then the greenhouse space on the fourth floor of Area B. Uh, based on request, um, we installed the call switches and the work was tracked, again, on time and material. PCO six oh two is an owner cost of two hundred and thirty-six thousand fifty dollars related to the athletic fields. Uh, this cost represents the fence and safety netting and backstop changes, uh, related to the PR eighty-seven athletic field revisions. As a brief summary, this cost takes into account some of the RFIs that are being incorporated into the work, uh, related to the safety netting and then the four-foot, four-foot top rail protection requirements that we had discussed with the owner. Um, six-inch sleeve posts for the backstops, um, foot and a half in diameter, six-foot deep foundations, and then four-inch sleeve posts, uh, for the safety netting posts, again, foot and a half in diameter by four feet, uh, deep foundations.
This is eagle fencing, so we keep it's a separate PO for eagle fencing.
Is that close to or equal what we originally carried for that?
Yeah, yes.
Yep. Uh, moving on to six oh three, it's an order cost of fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, after the abatement and demolition of the existing building, uh, that are renovating, there were a handful of rough openings in the elevated concrete deck, uh, from older mechanical and electrical penetrations. Uh, there was no detail or reference in the documents that quantify these penetrations or how we were supposed to repair them. Um, so we asked the question, and SLAM provided those details, and again, we had tracked the time, uh, the work on time and material. Um, and just to put it into perspective, there were a lot of holes that we had to fill, and, you know, we spent hundreds of hours of carpenters' and laborers' time to, uh, form these up appropriately and, uh, to address them, so. Six oh four is a back charge between trades. Um, if you recall, we had reassigned some of the scopes of work in Area H to the site work contractor. Uh, one of the scopes of work, uh, as noted in the PCO, was for trenching excavations for the new underground piping, uh, in the first floor locker room of Area H. Not a cost of the project, just a back charge, uh, between trades for a scope reassignment. PCO six oh five is a credit back to the project in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Again, if you recall, we had approved a large cost last month, uh, for replacing the concrete slab that was saw-cut and removed to facilitate the installation of the underground plumbing. During that slab removal, there were remaining sections of concrete, um, that were not acceptable to tie back into structurally, uh, when we replaced it. Again, we were dealing with a bunch of unforeseen conditions, which expanded the scope of work related to the tunneling systems. Um, so it changed it from a trench infill to a slab replacement. Last month, I had explained that we were negotiating the trench infill credit, um, with the general trades contractor, and it started out at fifteen thousand, and now we'd, we'd taken a credit back at forty-one and a half thousand. Um, so the other half of this cost was the backfill and compaction that was originally, again, assigned to the general trades contractor, but we had reassigned it to the site work contractor due to the increased extent of the work. Um, you know, strictly because general trades contractors couldn't, couldn't handle how big of a job it became.
Did you say it was a net credit of twenty-four thousand?
Yep, net credit of twenty-four thousand. Uh, six oh six, uh, CM contingency cost, this is for temporary toilet service, um, costs for the June period. You'll see another cost, uh, for July actually increased, but we'll get into that. Six oh seven is an owner cost of two thousand four hundred and six dollars. In high school main office, the project provided loose mail slot organizer compartments that sit on top of millwork that we had provided through our casework contractor. Uh, we had a request, uh, for additional shelving, which we stole from the middle school mail slot organizer temporarily, um, so this cost is actually replacing the shelving that we stole from the middle school, and then we actually ended up providing additional shelving, shelving, uh, based on the, the demand that the middle school needs for their upcoming movement, so. Um, PCO six oh eight is another athletic field cost, owner cost of seven thousand seventy-nine dollars. Uh, one of the first PCOS that we had approved for the athletic field revisions, um, based on PR eighty-seven, was Liberty Landscaping's scope of work. Few months after PR eighty-seven was issued, then came along eighty-seven R one, and then an RFI was submitted questioning the perimeter drainage quantities, uh, which was clarified by the design team. Ultimately, the drainage quantities were increased between the two proposal requests, uh, resulting in an added cost of over seven thousand dollars.
How were the entries, was it a design count?
Yeah, I think it was an omission that they had noticed between the change of documents and, you know, we had reviewed it with them in full, and.
All of these, all of these extras will be reviewed by John, categorized. Like he's, he's done already, like he's done so far. Yep. Every month he gives us a report of.
Um, PCO six oh nine is an owner cost of fourteen thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, based on review with the athletic department, there were requests for some revised gym equipment for the high school gymnasium that is being constructed. Based on the equipment that was used in the gym, in the middle school gym, there were a lot of similarities, um, that the athletic department became familiar with over the last few months, and, uh, decided to make some changes related to the badminton and pickleball and volleyball equipment. Um, so this cost was representing that. Uh, PCO six ten is an owner cost of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. During the Phase Two-A occupancy inspections, the deputy fire marshal had requested that the fire alarm pole stations be relocated from inside the vestibules, um, in the high school and middle schools to the adjacent corridor outside of the vestibule mantrap. Not a code thing, it was just a, based on a request from the deputy fire marshal, so it was something that we calculated.
How much was it?
Uh, just shy of two thousand.
You can say why?
Um, I think there were some issues based on other.
He just do what he tells you sometimes.
Yeah, basically, yeah. Basically, we do what he says, but, um, you know, he had tied it back to some issues based on some like school issues that happened with the school shootings and stuff, and that's kind of what his thought process is behind it.
This is probably the only change order we ever got from those guys.
Yeah, it is, I think it is, yeah, since I've been here, yeah.
You know, done yet.
No.
Yeah, well, we're, no, I'm just kidding. Tony's doing pretty good. They've been good.
Other towns are off.
They, they've been very accommodating to us.
And, uh, and the bio comes every day, what's his name, uh, Bob?
Robert.
Oh, Rob from the building department?
Yeah.
Yeah, Rob's a great guy.
He comes, he's.
Rob Chinkowski. Um, six eleven is a CM cost, four thousand dollars. This is for temporary toilet costs for the July period. It's actually a few thousand dollars extra than the June one that I had mentioned, um, because with the increased manpower over the summer, summer conditions, uh, we increased the cleanings, uh, to twice a week, so we pay a little bit more money. Um, PCO six twelve, owner cost of four thousand seventy-three dollars. Uh, this is for the miscellaneous metals contractor to remove and reinstall the masonry veneer support relieving angle at the old concession bumpout in Area H. Um, the bottom of elevation for the relieving angle was set based on the drawings, in the shop drawings that we had submitted. You know, after it was set, we had noticed that the metal roof deck, which actually gets concrete, it wouldn't adequately bear on the structural steel, so it wouldn't allow the concrete to be placed. Um, we had reviewed it with SLAM, and we had removed the angle and raised it higher to, uh, clear the conflict.
And that's it. Next one is you have the, uh, every month I give you the analysis of payments of each contractor and so forth.
Can we approve those?
You gotta vote on them?
Vote on those?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm sorry.
Was SLAM on vacation or something?
No, no, I was on vacation.
Oh, dude, SLAM, I said.
Yeah. Oh, Sl- oh, yeah, SLAM's on vacation. Have a motion to approve the PCOS. Amon?
I'm on.
Second?
Gary.
Gary? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And you have the next is the, uh, as I give you, uh, analysis of payments. Next one is the payments of invoices. The first one is, uh, BL Company, ten thousand five hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. Have a motion to approve. Ellen, second? Doug? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Reposed?
He should, he should be here.
Well, I agree.
They're Gary, but.
Okay, I agree. What do you say? She should be here. Somebody should be here.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Next one, SLAM, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion?
So.
Amon, second Doug, should also be here. Yeah. So, okay, in favor? Aye opposed? Gary?
Wait. You gotta come to every meeting. All right?
Next one, uh, Innovative Engineering, for seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars and forty-eight cents. Motion? I'm on. Gary, second Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the next three are for Tri-State. The first one was for one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. The second one was one thousand thirty-nine dollars, and the third one was one thousand twenty-four dollars. Have a motion to approve Tri-State. Amon and Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, okay. Next one is, uh, National Li- Library Relocation. All the books from the middle school, uh, seventh and eighth grade are now in the middle school third floor library, media center.
Are they in the right order?
What?
Are they in the right order?
In accordance to the Dewey Decimal System, yeah. I was gonna have my wife go up there, 'cause. So it's, so we're finished with my portion of libraries, done. So a motion to approve four thousand two hundred and forty hours.
Yes.
Doug, second Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is Myers. Myers has, this bill is for moving the old, uh, old, old middle school into the new middle school. The only thing that's left is the, uh, gym equipment and whatever they have to move, and the, uh, uniforms, because we don't have a place yet at the high school yet, because the high school has their stuff in their middle school.
Right.
Storage room, so that's the only thing that's left for, uh, Myers to do on.
In there, in there.
So approve, motion.
For their contract?
Yeah, but there's one other, it was a separate PO, which we wrote for the, uh, Central Office moving. That was sixty-eight hundred dollars. So they're finished, they were finished up in two more weeks, to move all that stuff. So have a motion to approve twenty thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for Myers, Gary, and Amon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next one, Insilco, this is all the library equipment that is, was installed at the middle school. Eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Have a motion to approve Doug, second Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All the shelving of bookcases, all that. Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all in. Just the shelving and the bookcases. Next one, Insilco, uh, for four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Interstate, I'm sorry, Interscape, that was a, a separate PO for, uh, uh, the nurses' uh, room in the middle school. Forgot to add a couple of things. So have a motion to approve four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Doug and Amon, I'm not Doug, Gary. And, uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next one is just paying some, uh, uh, total communication. As you know, they've done all the wiring and the phones and so forth. We still, they still, we still owe them forty-four thousand after we paid twenty thousand dollars, so have a motion to pay total communication twenty thousand dollars. Uh, Gary and Doug. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is total, there was a separate PO to add, uh, four phones that were missing for one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Have a motion to approve, uh, Casey and Gary.
What were they missing?
Yeah, four phones in this, in the classrooms. You know, they do.
The four classrooms were missed with phones, so somebody missed one or something?
Yeah, yeah.
They weren't on the drawing, you mean?
They, yes.
They were not on the drawing?
Correct.
Okay.
The next one is, uh.
You need to vote.
What?
You need to vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Sorry, thank you. WB Mason, two, uh, bills, one for thirty, thirty-four thousand seven hundred, and one for a hundred and eleven thousand four fifteen for the furniture that they brought in the other day. Have a motion to approve those. Doug. Or second Casey.
What is this for, to, to order from that?
This is, uh, work surfaces, uh, uh, also all of the teacher desks, also desks, uh, in the music room, they have that separate, uh, tables, the computers go on, that, all that stuff, plus, uh.
Part of the original bio?
Yeah, this is all, this is all, all, uh, that was bid and everything.
Okay.
It's just that they, we get that, uh, remember that high school, this is the middle school stuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Okay.
Next, you get the, uh, the, uh, project budget summary that I sent out. I, I divided it up, uh, in the construction costs with construction contingency and CM fee, and then on the bottom, I've done the turf project, which is, this is the synthetic turf, the installation, lining of the pipe, the SLAM, ONG's fee, geo-testing, and the fence. Still waiting for one item, ONG, uh, ONG, Fuji's final, uh, cost.
Ed, would you read, read that number as it relates to a six-million-dollar budget, please, I'll write?
Five million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand seventy dollars.
Oh, so it's not over budget?
No.
So I didn't say it was over budget?
We got a freedom of information.
No, we, we didn't get it.
No, the town, the city did, yeah.
All right, okay, I can, I didn't bring mine, can I see that? There you go.
Yeah.
This one?
How's our contingency look? Who requested it?
Contingency, we don't know, and that's why.
The city said you gotta ask the building committee, and nobody's ever asked.
Nobody's asked.
Oh, I thought they were required to divulge who, who asked for it for you.
But they told the person who asked to ask us, and then they never asked us.
They never asked us.
Oh.
Because we do not answer anything that's anonymous.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's strange.
Right, what?
Yeah, the whole thing is strange.
It's strange.
Hard to be over budget when you just started. Hard to be over budget when you just started.
Yeah, so. As a contingency, we still have a balance. There are some items that are gonna go down, but our balancing contingency, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Sounds pretty good right now.
Yes.
I said, not right now, I said, right now.
Look here, white stone's coming up, right?
Friday.
Tomorrow. To look, to look at the stone.
Because we already have a PO for him, he's all set.
No, no.
So, I guess you said a lot, a lot of stone. That goes under all the turf fields?
Correct, yes.
And under all the, wherever your black tap?
Yeah, that's a different type of stone.
Different kind of stone, but still, stone goes under everything.
It's, it's, it, so drains.
Yeah, yeah, that would be perfect.
Yeah. When I put a field in a region fifteen, we had the stone and we didn't have the carpet yet. There was a thunderstorm within five minutes after, nothing. That's what we have here and also on the new, on the field that we put in. Perfect drainage, thank God.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
For me, comments for the good of order, young man.
Thank you for everything. Seriously, thank you for all the explanations, everything. Thank you.
There'll be a test tomorrow.
He's as friendly as, oh, he's as friendly as committee member.
Yeah, yeah, he's looking for something.
Yeah, I want something.
Amon.
I'll say thank you.
Donna?
Uh, yeah, just a request that for people who pray that we do so for Fiona and.
Yes, of course.
I'm good.
Gary?
It's going good.
Shh. My mother, I think. Dave?
That's for me, thank you.
I'm good, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Mikey, when it comes time to plant more grass, we wanna have one more meeting before they do. Just so we could square away this whole conservation grass versus regular grass and all this other stuff.
What was, was that? A requirement to qualify as a rain garden? I've done enough conservation grass, but.
Yeah, that rain garden, I don't think.
The conservationist?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get grass. You can never maintain the grass, I don't think, I don't know.
It's supposed to be maintained.
Um, also.
But it's supposed to be maintained.
Yeah. Is that? No, not conservation grass, but if we had planted regular grass. We gotta, we gotta address that washout bits in there.
Yeah. I have a point showing all the different types, but it's, it's sitting down and I can have it before we actually start doing it.
A wild trial might be nicer, but.
Yeah, wild flower mix.
They make it for rain gardens, but it doesn't. Takes a while to grow.
Yeah, and there's some plantings in there that need replacing and things like that.
Then once.
I mentioned to these guys today, you might have known, weren't there. We gotta get TC landscaping out before, at least once, before school starts. I mean, the beds are a mess, you know, overgrown with weeds and all this other stuff. Whatever has to be mulched should be mulched.
But was that their contract or?
Oh, yeah, they gotta, they gotta come back and maintain until everything's approved and it's a long way from being approved. Because the grass growth, it just isn't what it should be. But the beds are growing a lot of weeds. And, you know, that place has gotta be standing tall, but it opens.
Yeah.
Funny for you to say that.
See what you did there.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Dean, anything?
I can tell you.
Um, Mike, how did we make out today with, um, the, that didn't, oh.
Yes, yeah, they came out today to investigate. I gotta follow up with an email to them today and make sure that they're here next week to start removing the mount panels on that elevation and keeping them open to the point where we can start to do some more investigation with the commissioning agent, IES. And that's the, that's the plan for now.
So they're gonna take those panels down now.
So the, so the guy came out today, he assessed it?
Yep.
No action was taken today other than, there's these, oh, you talked about maybe.
Yeah, no, no, he wants, he wants it done per the drawing with every.
Yep, all the perforations need to not be punched and placed, they're not, they can't be made in place, they need to actually be.
That's, that's what he wants the first step to be.
And this is the venting of what area?
The end of the high school.
The end of the high school.
Where the middle school windows are.
The box that creates the front of the high school. So Dean, uh, that's, he wants that to be the first step. We came up, what we thought was a pretty good alternative, which he agreed, but he wants this to be the first step.
And, and when, I'm sorry, you might have just, when is his first step?
I gotta reach out to them after today and just follow them and stress the importance of getting them out here as soon as possible to start dismantling that elevation.
And the materials readily available to?
Yeah, that's something we gotta still find out too. He didn't have an answer on hand today. He's just coming here to assess the situation and I just gotta work.
He's got like almost a whole palette down there of this, of this stuff.
More of that materials, it's just gonna solve for area H, so if we can rob from area H and then in any time, place, they'll.
And that material is perforated for H, you're saying?
Yes.
For some of it is anyway?
Yep, certain portion of that is supposed to be perforated, so.
The plan would be to kind of steal it from there?
Yep. Start to dismantle it and then get to a point where we can start to get SLAM and IES, our commissioning agents to
To actually see you guys.
Investigate it, start to do some more testing.
Less than twenty pieces.
While it's open, you know, we should investigate it, you know, so.
Why is this being done?
I was gonna say.
Having some space condition issues up on the board of vet, more specifically.
Is the space?
Close to the office.
Condensation.
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 Humidity in the space is not reacting the way it should be according to the way the system is designed. And we feel that there's some exposure in that backup wall system, you know, creating a chimney effect and sucking into the fourth floor office and kind of air exchanging. Not in a good way to where we're, you can't meet that humidity that, you know, we're supposed to be marching towards, so. We're now in the investigative process of that, so.
And this is fairly typical of a project.
I mean, this is, I would say this is a somewhat unique set of details put together, so it's, I mean, it's not, it's not typical. I mean, the, the parts and pieces are simple, but the way they all interface with each other is probably a little complex, so it's not so easy to just find one thing that's not right or not there.
Dean was explaining it to me a couple days ago, it's complicated. The systems are.
But we got the right people, I mean, the commissioning agent, the middle panel people, we just gotta get them to diagnose what.
Ellen, anything?
Uh, no, thank you everyone and echo Donna for Fiona, keep her thoughts.
Robin, anything?
Dan, um, thank you guys and echoing Ellen and Donna, thinking about Fiona.
John?
Nothing, thank you.
Is Pat still on the list?
I am. Uh, nothing to add, thank you.
Dave, anybody else on there? No? No? Okay. Future meeting, next meeting, August twenty-first. Have a motion to adjourn at five fifty-four. Ellen, second.
That's it.
Amon. That might be a record. Okay, thank you everybody, great day.
Thanks for coming, guys, online.
We appreciate it. We needed every buck.